Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to approve the agenda, make additions, legions and corrections this time. I have a couple additions. I'd like to add, under new business G1, Third Street Northeast, possible some repairs that need to be done there, repairs that do need to be done there. And then under mayor's report, I'd like to give just a short little thank you and update on the comp plan meeting we had last night. And then announcement regarding some concrete sawing that's going to be taking place overnight hours. That's all I have. Teresa, do you have anything?
Well, you do have an update, the resolution, that's two G, A2G in your packet. You have an update in front of you. And then to Cora's plan, I do have a fire department report and a letter from Betty Branley that I can share.
Dan, anything?
No.
No, quite no. Good, good, alright. Entertainer motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Very second. All in favor, say aye. Close same sign, motion carries out of the consent agenda. Everything's in there. We have the update to the resolution that's on the table in front of you for the Linkwood Utilities County. I'll entertain a motion to accept consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Close same sign. Visitors to the council, Mr. Vuvani, you are out.
Okay, well, as a visitor, is that good? You know why I'm here, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you have like three minutes.
Give or take.
Well, apologies in advance to the public. You know, I was hoping to come to you on a night that's fairly light on your agenda because I'm here to walk you through the cap improvement model, the cap improvement plan model that you commissioned us to work on. This meeting, it's going to take a while. There's steps involved in terms of presenting all the information. I don't know how much you've been forewarned about this. Okay.
Can we just one second?
Yes.
Maybe I'll take you back off for a second.
Yes.
Could we move that to the end and then move everything else up ahead? That way if folks that want to start and then they get a little tired, they can go.
If there's other business, it'd be.
So if you don't mind, we'll just shift there.
Which you did occur.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
I've been thrown out of better joints than this.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so we're going to move on to public forum. I don't have any cards, common cards where they turn in. Okay, no public hearings, E committee reports, planning commission. One, annexation resolution for the Houston's first subdivision. We have that resolution in your packet.
This falls under the orderly annexation agreement that the city of Caplin has with Manorville Township. So it'll be approved here, it's unapproved at the town next township meeting. And then we'll get all the filings together to move forward with the annexation.
Okay, and that was recommendation from the planning commission, correct?
Well, it needs to happen in order to move forward with the development of that subdivision. You have a preliminary plat approval next for Houston's first subdivision.
Houston, tonight?
The land, yep.
Okay.
That would be annexed.
Alright. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Houston's first subdivision annexation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Second. Okay, any other discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Close same sign. Motion passes. Next is the preliminary plat resolution for Houston's first subdivision. That is in the packet right after that page. Six E. And the map is there. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat resolution for Houston's first subdivision.
I'll make that one.
Thanks, Coy. I'll take Lonnie's second. Do you want to do that?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Close same sign. Number three, under committee reports, revocation of conditional use permit for Davidson Development LLC.
So this was, this was an instance where a conditional use permit was issued, but nothing was done on the property.
Sure. Okay. And that goes with our policy for that. So I'll entertain a motion for the revocation of the conditional use permit for the Davidson Development LLC.
I'll make that motion.
Dan, a second. Right. Thanks, Coy. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Close same sign. For denial of conditional use permit application for Chad Standard.
Yes, so he did bring a conditional use permit application in, but did not provide the attachments in time for the planning commission to review them. So we just need, as a formality, to deny that application till there's no time frame ticking. I can tell you, in the meantime, he has come in with another check and a new application and the required documentation. So it will be reviewed at the next planning commission meeting. But as a formality, we need to deny.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the denial of the conditional use permit application for Chad Standard.
Motion.
Thanks, Doug, you have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Thanks, Lonnie. All in favor, say aye. Close same sign. Five, general development plan for Meadowbrook Two. Okay, that map is in.
Yep, the general development plan was in there along with the staff planning review notes. And the planning commission did recommend that for approval.
Okay. I'm glad everything worked out there, Tony, from our conversation.
Yeah, we're so good.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the general development plan for Meadowbrook Two.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Doug, you have a second?
Sorry.
And thanks, Coy. Any more discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Close same sign. Thank you very much. Thanks for developing more lots of talent. Appreciate it. On the old business, number one, amendment to fee schedule adopting electric rates. So that's in the packet two, two seventeen.
So this will formally make those, that new rate structure a part of your ordinance, the fee schedule in your ordinance. We'll publish it a week from tomorrow. It'll be published and then it can go into effect.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Coy, have you been talking to the guy that was over here? Is he okay with this?
Yeah, a lot of it was with his demand. He was hitting, he was hitting the demand on an abnormal everyday basis, is basically what it is. So the demand has been bumped up. So that should take care of him, you know, for everything too. So, but, and it gets us closer to, I think, what is the.
Right thing to do.
The competitors. The competitors nearby, so.
Okay.
So I still think it needs to be looked at.
I think we've all got it going for it.
But like Dan said, we've got to give something in place.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on that?
No, I think, I think it ended up being pretty of deal for everyone involved.
Alright, whenever we can do something that can lower people's fees, that's not a bad thing, so. I'll entertain a motion to approve the fee schedule adopting the new electric rates.
I'll make that motion.
Dan, thank you.
Second.
Second, Doug. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Close same sign. At two, rental housing restrictions.
Registration.
Registration.
Yep. So we have, it looks like, two, four, six, eight, nine rental properties. Seven of them have previously had rental registration that was current. They did not bring their registration current this year, in 2017. And we have two properties that have not responded to requests to complete their registration forms. So we have folks with outstanding fees that are due for those rental registrations.
Okay, what, do we have a policy that says what the consequences are if you don't pay?
I believe the ordinance says that violation is a misdemeanor. In the past, though, we have certified those amounts of collection with their taxes. We certified the amount to the county successor for collection with their property taxes, so. That's a route to go. At this time, it is our rental registration. We'll talk at your next meeting. I'll come back with ordinance to kind of put some teeth to what that requirements are for rental housing, and that would take it one step further, but right now it is essentially registration fees.
Okay, so we can talk about this at the next meeting?
Or you can decide that you want to go ahead and.
Send it to the county as necessary, normal?
Yep. I can have a resolution for you at your next meeting if that's how you would like to proceed.
Any discussion, maybe? I guess I would make, I would make a motion from the chair that we send something to the county to collect the fees that are due. And everybody else has their own property done it, so.
Right.
So I would make that motion. Or is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion or questions?
This is just on the fees for the rental.
For the drug free housing.
Well, it's rental registration. If they have completed the crime-free housing certification process, we waive the fee for rental reg, we waive their rental registration fee if they have the crime-free housing certificate. Gold certificate, something.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions, discussion at all? First and second, all in favor, say aye. Close same sign. Thanks, Teresa, to get that.
Yep, it'll be on your next conference on my line.
Okay. G, new business number one, the one we added there. Had several comments, if you've driven Third Street Northeast from Manorville Avenue up to about Fifth or Sixth, probably through Sixth Street intersection or.
You can Fifth is bad, Avenue.
The street's falling apart. And we've had four or five residents sort of contacting us, live right on that street in that corner. And their concern was that we, the parade's going to be going through there this year. So they were just saying, yeah, it's great the parade's coming by, but they were concerned that the road would get even more tore up. Something that thinks it's been on the docket to fix next year, or patch or do something. So my thought was, I talked to Doug, is that there's work that needs to be done there. And if we're going to do a temporary patch and then come back next year and do something more permanent, we're just going to be tearing up money that we'd be putting down now temporarily. Again, this is way over my pay grade as far as understanding the terminology of mill overlay, chip, seal, whatever you want to call it. So, and my thought was, of course, you're going to do a street project ahead of time where you pay for it. We do have some money in the stabilization fund. That was money left over from last year's budget. So I would just throw it out there, maybe ask Brandon what your opinion, I talked to you about that as well last night. You know, is this something that we can get done this year? Charlie, feel free to jump into. Let's hear it. Work, so. Any opinions on?
Sure, so you said I was a part of those conversations. I did circle back with a couple contractors, got some preliminary numbers. What I'd be looking at for maybe an engineering estimate for the job would be about ninety thousand dollars to do what you mentioned, the mill and overlay from Main Street to Sixth Avenue there. So with that said, we do have a couple of local contractors that said they can get this work done on short notice by August 11th, which is the Friday before the parade on that Sunday. Now with that said, if the council's direction is to secure a contract with the contractor, what I've kind of worked out with them in a preliminary stage is council tonight would authorize myself and Teresa to solicit quotes for this work. We'd solicit quotes, receive them back on Friday, and the council could direct Teresa to enter into contract on Monday with these contractors. That's a pretty short order there. With maybe a condition that it fits within the engineering estimate of ninety thousand dollars. These contractors can have a signed contract, get things rolling and get this thing paid by August 11th. It seems like a good engineering number. When I talk to them about budgeting hours, it's a short, short timeline here for a contract. But it can be done, and that would be one of the conditions that we'd put on the contractors to complete the work by August 11th. I worked with Mr. Bradford there on getting some of the other patching and some other gate bell utility issues completed before we come with the contractor. So we've been working with Charlie on that, so we'd kind of do the city's things before the contractor came in. So I think at the end of the day, from the council's perspective, it's, the question is, do we want to do it now before the parade comes through on that Sunday? Definitely is a road that needs to be done, and it's on, it's supposed to be done. It's a matter of when we do it and how do we, how do we secure the contractor.
And it's not as for the, in the parade driving, that was the residents. I've been here, a little girl took a header this spring when her bike tire got stuck in one of the cracks and wherever she went. So I've kind of been here about for the summer. I knew it was on the list of things to do when they were found, but, you know, four more people. And if you drive that, that's pretty tore up right there. It's like switch.
There was a lot of discussing last night at the company meeting, too. People were discussing.
Yeah, when you had to put the spot where your worst streets are.
Yeah, and they took Third Street and Fifth Avenue Northeast.
What's the condition of the infrastructure under the street?
Probably not, not the best, but it's not the worst. We have other priorities. So Charlie and I talked about that today. I said, Charlie, are we going to be in here in ten years replacing this infrastructure? He said, no. I said, well, there's the answer. We're not going to do it in ten years. We need to do a mill.
Okay, I just didn't want to spend ninety thousand.
Right.
To tear it through.
No, that's it. Water may come apart and we could be tearing through.
Well, I know that. I get that. I just.
It's not.
Water going down it, right? Sewer just crosses it?
Uh, it was one block, block and a half, maybe, was sewer.
Of sewer, isn't there?
Yep. There are only five manholes on it. Yeah. Most of it just cuts through on the.
But I know there is one street.
Yeah. It's, I had called Chris the other day on this and it kind of, I thought I got the ball ruined, but it sounds like some people have been talking.
Yeah, we, yeah, you called me that, right, talked to him, so.
It just, the thing, that people in that area pay taxes too, and that road's been in bad shape for a long time. I thought it's time we did something with it, so. That's a, that's a busy street. That's a major road there. All them people coming out of Northeast and Third, you know. You only have First, Third and Seventh come out of it, so.
Seventh don't work very well.
You get a ton breaks on anything, don't you?
I got it right about eighty, eighty a ton is within the ninety thousand dollar estimate. So I think we're going to be below that, but that's the estimate number where I'm at right now, so. I think it's going to be lower than that, but I think we need to have, if the council wants to do something on short order, again, we'll go back to engineering estimate of ninety thousand, if that's a number the council can, can work with. You mean, if the bids come in below that number, then Teresa would be authorized to enter into contract with that contractor because they're making this project on short orders, so we're going to have to, we don't have time to bring it back to the council, obviously, get it built in two weeks, so.
It's a six blocks.
Correct, yep.
How many contractors?
I've talked to two. We can have this discussion now if we want to send it out to more contractors, try to solicit more work. We're kind of limited on paying contractors.
I get that, but I was just curious, how many you had talked to?
We're the only one that makes like.
Yeah, I know.
So we talked to Rochester Sand and Gravel and SL Contractor, the two contractors that we've talked to that can get the work done. We could solicit Alcor Construction, for example, does some paving. We could solicit them as a third to see if they can fit it in or not. Just haven't talked to them.
Because sometimes if they know there's more than one or two, the numbers tend to go down a little.
Yep.
Just a suggestion.
Yep, well, I definitely have to send it to Alcor, I just hadn't talked to them. Sending weed in to go right to the source for the mix, so. See if they get fitted in. They can, so. And again, that'd be a condition of this contract, is you can please date on short order.
It has to be.
Yep. Otherwise, we'll just do it next year. So that's the core question for the council. Do we want to do it to the parade? We can pull the trigger, do it now? Or we just punt it off till next year and we budget it?
We have the money for it.
That's sort of just math.
Correct?
Well, and like Doug said, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that drive that road.
Oh, I know.
It's in bad shape. It's not just in poor shape, it's.
It's bad.
And Fifth Avenue might be worse, so.
Fifth Avenue's just as bad, if not worse.
It's just, yeah, that Fifth doesn't have quite the volume it owns.
Quite a bit now.
Some straight from the school.
Yep, straight from the school, they go down the third.
I think that's what we should have on our raise there. Do something with that next year.
At first.
And, well, first from a certain point.
Right.
And then to go around the corner, then where it gets.
Fifth is only bad from Seventh to. North of Seventh Street is pretty, obviously, in good shape with the schools, right there, but it's, from Seventh Street, so.
Yeah, all the way to First.
All the way to First, that's bad. Not quite as bad as Third, but steep.
Alright, so any other thoughts? Want to try to get this done in the next three weeks?
If we can do it.
Why not give it a shot?
Or we out?
We're not seeing, it's fifteen thousand dollars a block. You guys are in this business that.
I think it should have come in a little better than that.
Yeah, but I mean, ninety thousand is kind of top that we would, you know.
Yep, if we're above ninety, then we're doing ourselves a disservice. We're paying too much to do on short order. Then we need to punt it out next year, be my recommendations. That's where I set that number on with Doug. I think it's going to be a little, a little less expensive, but we're going to have a number.
This is a nice number for us to start at and, and decide on, but I think we'll do better.
If they don't hit the deadline, it, contract canceled. And just no penalties, no.
Unless they started, then.
Eh, we'd have to, we'd have to put a penalty clause in there, because they got to start, I'd be like.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because if they've got it milled, then there's nothing to.
Yeah, there'd be probably one in the contract.
I'd say that, but I mean, if they weren't able.
If they didn't start.
If they didn't start, I don't see that we need to penalize them.
But to do it right, you'd almost have that penalty clause.
I was saying, well, if they do start, you don't want to.
We'd leave the manhole covered till after the festival. If they get it milled and.
So we don't drill them until after.
Because now you're asking another contractor, because it's going to end up being a local guy to that course and then raise them and we're going to put the high night, the plastic, uh.
Right, the ring.
Rings and such. And so, I mean, for what's that been saving on projects that have been around, it's amazing what we're keeping out of the sanitary. But I think that'd be a good idea. We get started, that we won't even plan on raising the manhole still after festival. Sound good?
You good with that?
Yeah, we got. Couple weeks. Maybe you want, maybe you want to go gentle, Matt. Well, we got six, three gate bells that are broken on there and. You got that alligator track that was bad on Second, Third and we'll fix it for them to come in, so.
Charlie's going to have some work to do beyond his contract to prep up and do some patching and get some gate bells fixed up. As we alluded to, Doug, to your comment, you're saying, we're planning on adjusting manholes to grade of paving through them.
As long as they've paved right over them and they can, they can grind them both with the cutter.
Yeah. Let's, let's talk about that a little more. It's more of a construct really, how we want to do the next, but probably won't be much of a cost.
Do you really have a problem with it?
That's what we're anticipating, but we can, we can talk more about it.
They, they always sit nights when you're using them afterwards. But, you know.
They know where they started.
I know, yeah, different engineers feel different, a lot of them like gray lumber. But again, there, no, with, with raising them first, then you've got to make sure someone's really jumping back and can't hold that again because there's a million of them around that get done that way and five years down the road, they're all around, you know. We haven't been having that trouble. We can talk about it, but that's not a big item.
Okay.
That's just a grand iffy.
So do I have a motion to proceed with the project?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
And we're going to add a third contractor, just to make it.
Okay, we may not get a bid, but.
Yeah, I know, I know, but just if I ask.
Contact whoever you can contact.
Yep.
And we just need to clarify.
Yeah, I'll get to that. So we have a motion to approve to go ahead with the project with a limit of ninety thousand dollars or less, or under ninety thousand dollars, if it comes in at ninety thousand. But the funds coming from the stabilization fund.
With the penalty clause.
With the penalty clause that we discussed.
Yep.
I'd second that.
And authorization from the administrator entering the contract.
So if it comes in less than ninety thousand, the administrator can enter the contract without having to come back to the session or the next council. So that motion good for you?
That's, that's.
The one you were making?
I make that motion, yep.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Close same sign. Motion passes, thank you. Each, the mayor's report, one complaint meeting. Last night, we had a complaint meeting, all the council was there last night. Brandon, Teresa, there was Everett was there. Probably about thirty-five to forty citizens besides our, our working group. It was a good exercise. If you know anybody, if any of the public here is, you know, I missed it, you want to partake in it. I do have some of the extra game board sheets that we use. I can get groups of two to six, take ten people together and do that. I, the positive comments, I talked to a few people that were there last night, today, and they were a little bit surprised at how much you got them to talk about all in town versus just what they see in front of their house with the route that they drive every day to work. They're actually able to sit at a table with somebody that lives Northeast when they're Northwest and said, oh, we had no idea that it was that or that that was an issue there. So I think it was engaging and got people to talk about it, so. Anybody else have something to share that was there?
Actually, I was just going to say, just like home, had kids doing it today. And they were building up, and they spent two and a half hours going through what the kids did. And they come up with some different insight that we as adults don't always. I thought that was interesting to get the kids involved, too. They come up with different things of what they want and what they need.
No, I, I thought it was a very good exercise, that board, board game they had there, Mr. Vuvani, I thought it was real good. We had a little variation of eight good people, and I'm glad we had one there that kids.
Was young.
Yeah, they're old. We get our age, forget what kids are doing now, you know.
I think it just made people think when they look at the square that said transportation. You know, they didn't think that, you know, when they start thinking about it with the things that were listed there, it is an issue or, well, no, we don't need that, or.
And, and people drive different ways, traffic problems, you know, they realize different things.
So, thanks for coming last night, guys. That was good. Number two, concrete saw, okay, this is basically an announcement for the public. There's going to be the county road twenty-one, the dump road and Fifth Street Northwest intersection. They're going to start doing concrete today, I believe, and then they're going to be doing some sawing at night, overnight. So it's just kind of a announcement that if the council or staff gets any phone calls, that, that is going to happen until they're done, so.
Is that kind of due to the hot weather, that they want to get it cut before the sun hits it? So they'll pop and kind of slow them off that.
I don't, I don't have any idea.
Yeah, they keep track of the concrete and temperature and air conditions and that as a function when they have to saw it. So that's why they may be sawing at night, depending on, depending on how the concrete's setting up. So it may be, if it's cold and whatnot, it may not be setting up as fast and it may take longer to saw, or duration before they start sawing. So, yeah, they keep track of that stuff.
So that announcement's made. Administrator's report, there was in the department head meeting notes, there was in there.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually, the, that's the correspondence that I can.
Okay. Nope, that's what I mean, get there.
Alright.
Engineer's report, nothing.
Okay, covered.
Personnel, nothing. Attorney, labor negotiations, attorney proposals, those were in your packet as well. Melanie?
Just to highlight a couple of the differences in the two quotes that we got. The one that we got from Susan Hanson, she proposed an hourly fee of one forty-five an hour, which was doorway to doorway, essentially. The, the quote from Tiffany Schmidt was one fifty an hour, but it was seventy-five dollars an hour for travel time. So it's hard to compare, it's a little bit apples to oranges, but. The other difference that I saw with regard to the proposals was that Tiffany Schmidt's office would not charge for copies. One, just for phone calls, mileage, fax, this postage, anything with that. Susan Hanson's included a photocopying cost at fifteen dollars a copy, fax transmissions at fifty cents per page, and then also mileage at the IRS rate. So those were the, the differences kind of between the two quotes. I did get an opportunity to talk, I, I called Ms. Schmidt just to ask for some. At the, the very end of her letter, she says, let me know, I'd be happy to provide you with names and contact information for other clients that they, that she had worked with. She's currently working for the city of Crosby, and she did give me contact information for a person there that if we wanted to talk to. And she's also working with the city of Aitken currently. She wanted to double check and make sure before she gave out any contact information for that individual from Aitken before she gave me that, and then said that she might send me an email with some additional individuals that would be a, a good reference for her. So Susan's letter included a number of cities and some counties that she'd worked with, so. I didn't reach out for specific references from any of those cities or counties, but I certainly couldn't do that. And that's really all I wanted to highlight about the two proposals.
Well, Rochester Dodge Federal, would you look out, hope that all those counties, if they're not, if they're flames, will we get you an answer?
Well, I'm gonna speak, I like the work she did with the other stuff that she handled for us, and I like the type of work that she does. She's actually working for more the government side of the city side of it versus the other people that make their work and more for the employees. I went out on their website and looks more like their, their proposals, more cut and paste right off their website. So, the one was from Susan I liked. I think that what she did for us, I think we should go with her, with those guys.
I thought the same thing with everything that they're working for. It's for cities and counties, and on the, you know, we're spending the city money. I'd like to be with someone that's working for the city.
And I like the work that she did before. She's very precise and not, I guess, I guess her amount would not be overdoing it. We got what we paid for, I think, a hundred percent.
I agree. She has done a nice job on the agreement.
Okay. Thanks for your motion.
I'd like to make the motion for Madden, Gladier, and Addison.
I'll second. Okay, we have our motion and a second on the floor to engage Madden, Galantner, and Hanson for the negotiations. Is there any other discussion or questions?
You're good with it?
I, I don't, I'm good with Susan, but I, doesn't mean that Ms. Schmidt, who I just don't know, I haven't had any interaction with her, doesn't mean that she's not also absolutely qualified as well. So I'm sort of neutral as far as.
You have to go to CE class and sit between both of them.
You're a professional, not me.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Chair's correspondence.
So I did include the notes from the department head meeting. I can add an update from the fire department. All the calls are going well. The new members are progressing well with training and getting to know everyone. They're very busy getting prepared for festival weekend, and they're expecting that will be attendance for the dance this year due to having a bigger band in. I think this is like anniversary year for them.
Fire department.
Yes. So they're doing a little something more. So that's what I have to add to the department head meeting notes. And then I did receive a letter from Betty Branley. It's not the first correspondence I've had from her in regards to this particular concern. She is concerned about a look downtown, and very specifically, she does talk about the awning. That's over the four buildings that made up the previous root hold building. So she's sharing her concern, and if you'd like to hear a letter, just let me know.
She's got concerns with that, honey?
Yeah.
Yep. And she's not the first. There's been a couple of comments made downtown that some people don't think it's safe.
Oh.
But I'm not, you know, every time we tell me I'm not an engineer, if I don't.
Jay Kruger did.
We'd have to have the building, it's not just a tiny lot.
Yeah, I did ask Jay Kruger to take a look at it as far as the safety aspect, and he did not feel that there was risk to the public associated with the awning at this time, but he did have to agree that there are perhaps some visual aspects of the awning that, you know, are plus fun and stellar.
Well, I think it's a good time to, you know, this was brought up last night, you know, and I don't know, it should be something we start thinking about, how we can all get our heads together a little bit and try to screw something out of the street a little bit. I know someone was talking of weeds in front of buildings and stuff, just small items, but small things are a lot to make something look clean, you know, so. I'm just saying, let's go put our thickened gas on and see what we come up with a little bit here, and if that's something, then.
Does the city still have an ordinance for weeds?
Yeah.
Yep.
We still have a weed inspector.
That's me.
No, no.
I'm potential weed inspector, I learned that by election. I would never run across.
Remember when Bert Beersid was?
Yeah.
I pointed out some weeds to him, and he said, well, you can cut them down.
My two buildings, by the way, are sprayed, and there's no weeds on the sidewalk. My two buildings downtown, just.
Your inspector job.
Yeah. I'll walk down East Street, not be my break at ten o'clock.
I think that's what those green stickers were for last night.
Yeah, I agree. I'll take care of the weeds, apparently, and we'll keep thinking about spurs up downtown, so. And I think that brings us to almost the end of our agenda. Mr. Wee, you waited patiently.
I'll make that motion.
You waited patiently. Thank you very much for doing that.
Oh, no problem.
And I look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Oh, now?
You are up.
All right.
Very good.
Now, now.
Yeah, you are, yes, you need your name.
It's all yours.
I'll get rid of trouble.
I think you've done the same personally.
All right, well, I'm not quite sure how long ago it was, at least three months, but the city had accepted our proposal to take you through a capital financial planning process. What we do is we do this interactively, graphically, as opposed to, you know, your standard capital improvement plan, you might think of a list of projects and costs and what years you get done, but there's really little discussion on how you pay for them. So instead of maybe prioritizing things on a pure physical nature, this street's in worse shape than that street, we prioritize things from a financial standpoint, not just what needs to be done, but when can we afford to do it. The first step was to go through a comparative analysis of Cassin with other cities of similar size from within this area and also maybe slightly outside of this area, see how you stack up financially. And the reason we do that is because we wanna see where are you strong and where are you weak, kind of build the story, because later on, when we start putting in the projects, you wanna be able to set some thresholds. You don't want your tax rate to go above X, you don't want your utility rates to go above X, you don't want your debt ratios to go over a certain level. And we'll also look at the actual dollars coming out of a resident's pockets in terms of, because they couldn't care less about that other stuff. They just tell me how many dollars are coming out of my pocket each month, and we'll tell you what those dollars are. All right, so this is not rocket science, this is simply a comparative analysis, and we'll tell you who these cities are in a minute. But the dark blue here is Cassin, and the light blue is the comparative cities. And this first page is valuation. This is how much of your tax base is wrapped up in Tiff districts, and you can see it's just a small percentage of the overall tax base. This is the actual available tax base, this one on the right. So when you do your levy each year, this is what it's getting spread across. Yours, three point two million versus four point seven million, so right off the bat, compared to the other cities, which I will show you, you have a below average tax base compared to those other cities. Now, let's look at revenues. Your primary revenues in terms of operating are local government aid and your property taxes. Your local government aid, you're collecting just about exactly the same as the average, but what's good news to your residents is that you're levying less than the average of those other cities. Not much less, but something less. The problem is, even though you're levying less, remember your tax base was less? Your tax rate is a function of what you levy divided by your tax base. So even though you're levying less, your tax base was lower, so you divide those two numbers, and you've got a tax rate here that's higher than the average. Okay? It's not an alarming thing, but it's something we need to keep an eye on. So here's the cities, and this is broken out by tax rate. St. James, Redwood Falls, here's you, Cassin, Lake City, Wake Park, Byron, Stewartville, Crookston, Zimmerman, and Herman Town over on the left. So we were trying to find cities, you know, in that five, six, seven thousand population range compared to. This is not a comparison, but it's information I think is important to you, or should be important to you. It's just looking at the end of the year fund balance in your general fund, your main operating fund, compared to what you spend out of the general fund each year. And typically, we wanna see this fund balance to expenditures at fifty percent, because your main revenues come in every six months, so you need enough money at the end of the year to carry bills for fifty percent of the year. So your cash goes down, all that taxes, and LGA comes in, and you spend your money, and then, and so forth. And you can see that you've slowly built to the fifty percent mark in two thousand fifteen. And remind me, Nancy, in sixteen, where we were, do you recall? It was fifty percent or more.
About that, I think.
Yeah. And so what we're gonna wanna keep in mind is that as you move forward, if you're doing balanced budgets in your general fund, we don't wanna overspend that budget, okay? Because we don't want this to go backwards, all right? So you say, well, we got lots of money in the general fund. Well, yeah, there is lots of money, but it's because we need to carry money to cover those six months, all right? Median household income, here's where you are doing better than the average. Compared to the state demographer's office estimate from two thousand fifteen, the median household income was sixty-eight grand to an average of fifty-five grand. So the good news is, we got some wealth in the community. And here's where you rank amongst those same cities, with only Byron being the wealthier. I see some furrowed eyebrows and questions. Please, this is interactive, so.
I do have to believe Byron would be ahead of us.
Well, take that one neighborhood there, there's a lot of money.
Yeah, I know, but.
That's a pretty big neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, too.
No, that's per, that's people.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Does that count, by the way?
There's one.
Yeah, you were already doing that. You're not fooling anybody.
There's one over there, and it's supposed to come on.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Hey. That was Brandon's idea, I can't take credit for that. All right. Debt per capita, this is just basically taking your total outstanding geo-debt divided by your population. And so as your population rises and you're paying principal off, that number goes down, and you're above average. And that's before we did the massive borrowing this year, so it goes up even higher. But I'll show you later, that's not too alarming, but some we're gonna keep an eye on. Just so you know, from a credit rating agency standpoint, they would like to see your debt per capita below five thousand, and which you are. Once you start getting above five thousand, they start to get a little itchy, right? Not necessarily a terrible thing. Rusford is up at about six thousand dollar debt per capita, and they never got dinged for that, but it's always a comment that they make. All right, so then we looked at water rates and sewer rates, and every community borrow or bills differently. Some bill quarterly, some bill per thousand, some bill on cubic feet. And so what we do is we take the data that they send us, and we reconfigure the numbers so that they bill on a per thousand basis. If someone used five thousand gallons in a month hypothetically, and you bill monthly, what would that bill be, right? That's the only way we can compare apples to apples. And you'll see your average bill is about twenty-two bucks versus twenty-seven dollars, so your water bills are lower than that. But your sewer, not surprising, because you've been making adjustments in your sewer rates for this large project, are higher than about fifty-seven dollars to thirty-nine. I included this, just, I don't usually include this slide, but you have a municipal electric, you were talking about rates earlier, and instead of using a five thousand gallon user, I use a six hundred kilowatt per month user. And there was only three cities in the comparison group that had municipal electric, so I only compared them, and you were seventy-seven dollars to seventy-one dollars for an average monthly bill on that. All right, so then we took a look at, all right, let's say I have a home that's taxed at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of value. I use five thousand gallons of water a month. How much would my taxes, sewer, and water cost me for the entire year? And in Cassin, it was about two thousand dollars a year, and this is, I'll tell you what that was. The comparison group, one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, so about what's called thirty bucks a month, more expensive than the average, right? And then here's a breakdown. So we've got St. James and Redwood Falls, both large communities, but they're out west. Byron is right behind you here. But I always wanna include one other slide whenever I show that, and that is, let's take your total LGA, let's take your total levy, add those two numbers together and divide by your population to find out how much money you're collecting on a per person basis to determine what I'll call an efficiency ratio on what you're doing. And here's where you fit, you're right in the middle. So despite some of those things that say, you know, it's more expensive and so forth, remember, we're dealing with less tax base. You're levying less. You're right in the middle of the pack in terms of efficiency. So while we have to keep an eye on those things, I don't want it to go away from this meeting thing, meeting thinking it's because of poor management, it's because of what you, your assets, what you have to work with. This is the story I'm trying to tell. Any thoughts or questions on what we've seen here? This is the easy peasy none, okay. You didn't pay us to do that. I mean, that's just information that makes the next part. All right. Now, I promised you we're gonna do everything graphically, which we will, but there is a convoluted input page here, where this top half is gonna be all sorts of assumptions, and then down below, each column represents a project. And we plug in the project cost, and what we think it costs today. When we plug in the year that that project should take place, there's gonna be inflation. So if you say it's a million dollars today, and you say two thousand twenty-three, it's gonna be more than a million dollars. So the project, it builds that in. Are we gonna finance it? If so, how many years? What's the interest rate? Blah, blah, blah. Are we gonna use cash? Fine, we'll use cash. Which fund? We're gonna take it out of it. And then if we are financing it, we're making debt payments, what revenue streams are we gonna use to make those payments? And then when we plug that stuff in, it will automatically change the graphs behind. But before we do that, let's not plug in anything. Let's just see where you're headed. If you do nothing, just pay for what you got, you know? Where are we headed? This is the tax rate page, and you see your rate, your tax rate has been fine here the last few years. The yellow portion is that portion of your tax rate associated with debt supported by taxes. Your utility debt's not included in taxes, so that's not part of this. The green is basically everything else. And you'll see that the green is flat, and that's because I'm projecting that your operational costs of the city, let's say they go up two or three percent a year, will not outpace the growth of your tax base. So if your tax base is growing up two or three percent a year, your operational spending's only up two or three percent a year, your tax rate should be unaffected. We could be optimistic, and we could say the tax base is gonna grow faster than our spending, in which case, you see how it goes down. And when the tax rate is dropping, you can see how things become more affordable. If we drew a line right here and said, we don't want our tax rate to go over this, we know we could start scheduling projects in here and keep the tax rate kind of where it is. The danger of this kind of thing is if the growth doesn't occur, you're hosed, right? So conversely, we can be a little bit pessimistic, and the percentages I plug in are sort of irrelevant. It's more of, are they equal or are they not? If we're spending faster than tax base, you see the opposite. So what I usually advise, but I'm open to suggestions otherwise, is I usually advise is plan on flat. Now, what kind of growth? We've got two new homes per year built into this, which I think you probably are exceeding by how many?
Twenty-five so far this year.
Yeah. So I think we're being fairly conservative in terms of the new home growth, and I would suggest to stick with that, because then if we do better, it's great, right? Here's our water bill. I think staff may, maybe staff didn't, but they talked to me about potentially advising you about the need to adjust water rates next year. This is why. Here's that monthly bill. You see there was a small bump of seventeen, that twenty-something bucks a month that we showed in the comparison. But look at the projected fund reserves within the water fund itself. Diving, losing money. So if you don't, it's gonna run out of money. So if you don't, it's going to run out of money. How much should we raise it? We'll get to that. Your sewer fund, conversely, it's a little bit odd. You know, you've got a pile of money at the end of the year sixteen. That's because you've had, you know, money coming in for projects and money going out. But we think when the dust settles, and all your projects are complete out of the sewer fund, you'll have a little bit under a million bucks in the reserve. We can't guarantee where exactly that's going to end up, because we don't know where these projects are going to finalize. But that would be fairly close to where those reserves were prior to undertaking all these projects. So we feel fairly confident that it'll be in that realm. But look what happens. Right here, the cash goes crazy. And that's because you've got a loan, is it PFA or USDA?
PFA.
You've got a state loan out of the sewer fund for five hundred and sixty-something thousand dollars a year that stops. And when that stops, you can see why the cash just goes.
What year are we on that?
Uh, this is two thousand. Can't you read this? Let's see, uh, twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
Alright. Uh, here's your storm bill. You recently did a bump in your storm rate, and you can see we're expecting the cash to bump up. Now, Brandon, we have not added any projects yet.
So on the graph, the top part for the fund balances, is there, is there a line? I can't see that far. Is there a line on there that shows what our desired fund balance would be?
No, because there's, um, when it comes to enterprise funds, with the general fund, it's science. We know we want fifty percent or more for the reasons we went over. With enterprise funds, it's more art. They are funds that are being built, you're replenishing money every month. So some might argue, well, you only need a month's worth of reserves, which would be piddly, piddly, right? Others would say, well, you'd need tons of money in case something breaks. Well, that might be unrealistic, because it might drive your rates horrible. So what I do is, I track it, and we'll decide tonight what's reasonable in terms of. Okay, here's your, your debt per capita. Now, remember, you were at that twenty-four hundred or so when I showed you the comparison, and I said it did not include all the big time borrowing from this year. So that's why in seventeen you see it spike, but we're just under four thousand. The good news is, is that all the debt, when we've been issuing debt, is we've been pushing the terms shorter as much as we could to make those principal payments larger each year. And you can see how quickly it's with us. Stabilization reserves, Mayor, you were talking about using ninety thousand plus engineering out of your stabilization fund. I have about a hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars in there currently that potentially could be used, which I do not have as part of this. So I'm glad you went through that discussion earlier, because now we're going to plug that in. Because I didn't have that one before. Alright, and then this is the page. So at the end of the year two thousand sixteen, remember we told you that typical house had, you know, roughly a couple of grand in taxes and sewer and water and so forth? How much more per month does it cost that house than it did in sixteen? So in this year, it's going to cost, you know, ten or twenty bucks more a month than it did the year prior. And if we don't add anything else, you can see it stays kind of, kind of flat. So without adding anything, you know, the increased cost in people's homes and utility doesn't, as of right now, doesn't have any increases. So then what I did is I plugged in this line, said, well, if the cost increased three percent a year, total cost of government service, let's put it that way. Three percent a year, that would be the line. So, you know, arguably, when we plug things in long-term, we're kind of wanting to stay in that realm. That was just sort of a, well, it's not been recently, but historically, it's been the rate of inflation. Okay, so that's without any projects included. So let's just go ahead and right away. How would you title the project that you discussed earlier with the street?
Or street, northeast.
Hey! And what do you think with engineering, so they just throw in an extra ten-something percent? So just call it a hundred grand?
Yeah, it's not going to be that much.
And we're going to use cash. And we're going to do it this year. And we're going to take it out of stabilization funds. This first one. It's going to be a hundred. So that's not going to have an impact on anything. It's not, because we're not issuing any debt, we're not increasing our levy as a result. It doesn't impact enterprise funds, but it will impact. Oops. Oh, yeah, it did it. It did it. I was expecting it to drop, but that's because of seventeen. See, now, instead of we had a hundred fifty, I think we're at one fifty-seven. Now it's down to fifty-plus. Alright, so that's how it's going to work. We plug things in, it's going to impact the graphs. So what I did is I've met with staff a couple of times now, and started plugging things in. We didn't want you to start from scratch. So what we're going to do is I'm going to plug in the projects the way we put them together, show you the results. And this is not your plan, this is what we came up with. Then you get to attack it, say, change this, do that, why on earth did you do it that way? Those kinds of things. And my hope is that by the end of tonight, we have a little bit of consensus on what this should look like. Recognizing, you're not committing to whatever we put in here, you're not committing to those. It's basically saying, yeah, that's the path we're headed on. But let's say we have a project that's listed there two years from now. Two years from now, you look at where we're at. And then we see how close we are to what the assumptions were leading up to that. And if we're close, pull the trigger. If we're not, we come back and we put it on the wall and we work again. And I don't know if you recall, but part of the proposal was, as long as we're your financial advisor, yeah, you pay for the upfront project, but then, you know, if you want us to come back every year or every other year, put this on the wall, work on a, do a workshop, there's no cost, right? So you don't always have, you never have to feel, it's like you're getting pressured. It's like, oh, God, what do we do it or not? Well, if you're uncomfortable, we'll just slap it up on the wall. What I do is I usually wait for your audit to be done every year. I go into the model, I handle the spreadsheets behind it, and I just plug in the data of what you actually did. And so here's where we are today, here's our starting point. And, you know, St. Charles, Yoda, I was in Racine last night, Dodge Center, Preston, Lewiston, Yoda, Spring Valley, I, I, almost all of my clients do this, Manorville. Alright, so don't be afraid to call and ask for that service. Okay, so, um, why don't I, for the sake of speed, usually what I would do is I'd kind of walk you through these one by one. Why don't I go ahead and just plug in everything that we came up with, really quickly? Alright, so this first one, you just, a water tower project. We had two thousand twenty-three, we had that as a twenty-year borrowing, a hundred percent coming out of the water fund. We've got a two thousand twenty-one upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. Don't know if it'll actually happen or not. And we have that as a twenty-year borrowing, but instead, maybe a conventional financing, but it'd be a PFA loan again, or USDA for that matter. A hundred percent out of the sewer rates. East Main Storm Project, this year. We have that as a five hundred thousand dollar project. You had already transferred from a couple of different sources money to your storm fund, I believe, for this project. We have that as a cash project. One project I'll tell you about is, if you recall, when we issued the bonds this year for the Big Street project, we downsized it by about eight hundred grand, because we were scared we were going to get to that ten million dollar threshold, if you recall. And if we exceeded ten million between your PFA loan this year, we would have paid a higher interest rate. So how do we handle that extra seven or eight hundred thousand dollars going into next year? That's what this one is supposed to be. And what we're trying to do is we're hoping to get this paid for with cash. But we're going to have to look at this, because we had a couple hundred thousand coming out of your stabilization fund. Now that you're going to pay for that street you just authorized, we might have to rethink that. If we can't get enough cash to fully pay this thing off, we'd have to look at a supplemental borrowing. But if we can use enough cash to get the borrowing really small, then we've got like quarter million in there. You could potentially go through Minnesota Rural Waters loan programs. You've done that before, they have a microloan that's thirty. Think of the tens of thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars you spent on that big, multi-million dollar project. You can do a microloan for thirty-eight hundred bucks at last. So if we have to borrow any money, that's the way to do it. But we'll plug that in as a borrowing now for like a microloan. But we're really, next year, we'll really push to see if we can just cash it out and not, not do any borrowing. Highway fifty-seven with MinDOT, two thousand twenty-one, being a four million dollar project. It's going to inflate, of course, with the state throwing in two point four million. I can't remember what that was for.
Well, part of it's the state, I mean, those are real estimates.
Okay. We have that because of being roads, it's a ten-year borrowing for the remaining money, and we're splitting that between storm, sewer, and water rates. Then we have this unnamed future generic street. The reason we do this is if we think we can, you're always going to have streets. If we can fit in a project, we don't have to name it. But what, instead of going to the engineer and saying which streets need to be done, what we tell them, if you agree with this proposition, is we tell them, hey, Brandon, in two thousand twenty-three, you've got four million dollars. What's the best way to spend it? What streets, whatever. So instead of him coming back and saying, I got an eight million dollar project, you say, you've got four million, Brandon, how are we going to spend it? You follow? That's why we plug it in and not necessarily say exactly what it's for. Again, just a ten-year borrowing, because it would be streets. Then again, another one, street and utility projects in twenty-seven. We already added in Third Street. So what have we got there in present value? Well, we got one, five, six, ten, seventeen. We've got about seventeen million dollars worth of stuff plugged in here, okay? So now I'm going to show you the graphs.
Mike, if I could just add one thing. So MSAS is not, as part of this equation, MSAS money that we're getting from MinDOT, we can tap into that fund, so there's just no cost allocation for it. It's a, it's a wash from the city's perspective.
Is that what, what do you mean?
Well, I'm just thinking, well, right now, in our municipal state fund, we have just under a million dollars.
Okay.
That's the funds that we just go to MinDOT and do a street project. We were thinking so far of a sixteenth street project would be specifically a MSAS fund, so.
That's money in the city's audit or money that the state has?
The state has waiting in the bank for us. So some of that's just not part of your calculation.
Well, unless it's part of this.
No, it would not be part of that. So I'm assuming it's a net wash from the city, it's more of a cash flow, it's not a.
What do you mean, net wash?
Uh, so we would incur the cost of the project and then get reimbursed from MinDOT.
So what happened, what impact?
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay, well, let's just, let's just do that. Let's just account for it, just so it's in there.
And that, of course, assumes that we have, we were taking a larger project that we could offset with the MSAS funds.
When would you do that?
We haven't.
Just throw me a year. Next year.
Lose on that gravel road.
Yeah. All right, two thousand eighteen. You think it's a million bucks that we got?
We have, may have a million dollars to, to be reimbursed from MinDOT.
Well, as long as, if we don't, we don't have to match that?
No, no.
So if we keep that project to a million, and we get a million, there's no impact?
Right.
Right? That's what you're telling us?
Correct, yep.
We spend a million, they give us a million, we're good.
Yeah, unless we have other costs, of course, that'd be it.
Right.
As long as we're looking at this generic street now, I mean, we've got something coming, that sixteenth street. We sure don't want to say no to it when the trigger can be pulled, you know what I mean? Is this something, we got to see what his numbers say here now, right?
Yeah, when I show you the impact of this, then I want you to.
Then we start saying how, yeah, how much is we can have.
Yeah, yep. So, okay, so here's your tax rate.
So you just included a million dollars as a whole, you know, city debt.
There's no debt for that million bucks, they're saying.
Okay, washed out.
Yeah. This first little bit is that little teeny little microloan, and we're going to hope to even try to avoid that, right? But you see, the reason we scheduled some of those other things supported by taxes until this point was because you had other debt going offline. So that's why we scheduled it at the time that we did. And so the idea was, and we'll never get it perfectly flat, but the idea is to kind of keep it kind of in the realm of where it's been. Oh, we've got to adjust water rates. Now, this sounds terrible, but in terms of dollars, this doesn't add up to much. But we had an eight percent increase for next year in the water rates, and a four percent bump annually thereafter, every year, four percent more. And we didn't have an adjustment for sewer, but we did have a one percent bump in the storm for next year. So here's the water. So you can see, it was diving, 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 but we went eight percent. That's still not going to get it done. So you had to do four percent every year, and then you can see it flattens out and leaves about a hundred grand or so in the fund. So the question is, what's enough in the water pump? Well, if those rates scare you, we'd have to go even higher to rebuild the funds. But what is an eight percent increase on a five thousand gallon user? It's less than two bucks a month. So eight percent sounds bad.
Looks bad on paper.
Looks bad on paper, but it's about two bucks a month. And the reason it's a small number is because you're, remember, your water rates were below average to start with.
That's the, that's the key.
Uh, there was, your sewer bill, we're not suggesting any changes in your sanitary sewer rates, at this time at least. And there's your one percent bump in the storm, and that's, you know, thirty cents a month. Here's your debt per capita. The other reason, not only were we kind of worried about your tax rates, we tried to schedule these things out because you were pushing four thousand. Trying not to go above that. Stabilization reserves, you see that going negative? Because I took a couple hundred thousand dollars out trying to buy down that supplemental borrowing, that's microloan thing I was talking about. Well, since we paid for the, what do you call it, third?
Third.
Because of the project, now we'll have to readjust. So let's go back. And if I used a hundred thousand of it there, I got to take a hundred thousand out of it here. There you go. So the idea is to just keep this thing paying. Now, why does it keep going up? The deposits you make to the stabilization fund vary from year to year. I understand you're looking at underspent capital outlay out of your general fund and so forth. Every year, you decide how much to move over.
Undespend, a bunch of cherry onions.
Yeah, right. I'm just assuming that number's fifty grand a year. It might be a hundred grand one year, zero the next, just come up with an average. But here's the cost, remember that monthly cost business? And we're, we're kind of staying right where we were. There are some increases here, no doubt, but notice in the long term, trying to keep this a reasonable rate of increased cost. So that's what we put together. That's not your plan, that's what we did, trying to give you a starting point. I don't, I'm having just a hell of a time reading your face. You, I pride myself on my ability to read people, and I cannot read. You're like five stones.
So is this where we just start to ask questions?
Ask questions, demand changes.
Okay, I'm not going to demand any changes yet. I heard a wastewater treatment plant upgrade in two thousand twenty-one. Aren't we just doing a big one right now to where that's going to, it's not going to last us more than four years?
This is phase two.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I guess that's.
So we took a eight to ten million dollar project and pared it down to a three million dollar project we're completing now. So there is a potential for a second phase. And when we have to do that second phase is more dependent on the growth of the community. So we've kind of delayed that payment from what we were looking at, would have been a lot larger project. So one, delayed the project and reduced the total cost even down from what we were looking at.
And then does that number up there for what we're projecting our cost to be in two thousand twenty-one, does that take into consideration Manorville paying their seventeen percent share?
Yes.
Or is that a hundred percent of us?
We've got it kind of figured in, it's not shown on this page, but we've got it in the background spreadsheets. We've got Manorville's payments coming in.
Okay. The seven hundred thousand dollar connection charge to offset the debt, I assume?
Yeah, the cash payments have been accounted for. You've received, what, four hundred thousand so far, and you got another four hundred coming in.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now, just to shine some light on this, what we're doing with South Fork here now, the reconstruction we're doing up here on these streets, should have a huge impact on the need of expanding out there. If any of it works in our favor, I think we're getting a lot of water from the south, you know, on our gallons. Because this is in our peak days that made us do this anyway, and that was all rainwater. So if we get these things fixed up, where we're getting the rainwater into the system. Because this is in our peak days that made us do this anyway, and that was all rainwater, so, if we get these things fixed up, where we're getting the rainwater into the system, it's gonna prolong our need out there too. These other dollars we're spending, are hoping that we're, we're chasing, you know, pushing this further down.
Yes and no, uh, it's gonna definitely help, uh, we did build in, coming in I N I to the plant, but there's two things to design for, one is the clear water rainwater, the peaking flows that you're describing, the I N I issue. The other thing is the, more of the, uh, demand due to the number of people living, uh, how much actually sewage is getting there, so that's where the next phase is gonna kick us into that. So, if we continue to grow people, and there's more sewage getting there, now the ground runoff's gonna trigger phase two. So that's where we delayed that upgrade, a portion of the upgrade of the plant.
What population are we looking at, Mark?
I think we were, was it five to ten years, Charlie? I'm trying to remember, it's been a few years, if you remember. I'll have to look back, and maybe we can talk to Mike on that.
Well, another reason we got two thousand twenty-one, is remember that big payment drop sauce, that you're currently paying out of the sewer fund in two thousand twenty-one? And that payment is five hundred and sixty-something grand a year, and you'll see the payment on phase two here, four million today, close to five million by the time you do it. Two hundred and seventy grand, if we can get twenty or one percent money again. So, we're still gaining ground.
Gaining ground, yeah.
Yeah, we're still doing better, so, if we can survive until two thousand twenty-one, this larger sewer project isn't quite as scary, because you've made the adjustments in your rate aggressively early on.
And I think we'll be, be beyond twenty twenty-one, probably.
We went with the cheapest options, please, M P C A. Because if we were to win that ten million, who's to say in twenty twenty-one, they didn't come back and say, now you're gonna do five million more?
Okay.
Yeah, I just didn't know, I, I just...
Yeah, we're staring at a lot bigger project than what we're doing now, so we did the smaller one, with the understanding we may be coming back for phase two, based on growth of the city.
Okay.
And the I N I discussion wasn't included in that, we're still going to continue to reduce the I N I.
I think we put our water tower project out for two thousand twenty-three somewhat arbitrarily, I'm not sure why, we, we didn't know what year to put, so...
Well, Brandon, it's five to ten years, I think we chose seven or something like that.
Yep, same thing there, depends on water usage, depends on the growth of the city, uh, we're right getting towards needing a tower.
So, can you go to the slide that you showed where it goes flat, for adding two houses a year, for your assumption, that we're gonna add two houses a year to our tax base?
Okay, if, the, the two homes per year would impact the enterprise funds more than the tax base, because the tax base, I do it on a generic percentage basis. But I've got a two percent growth in your tax base, let's take a look.
Is it far left, is that, uh...
Look at your population and values, I mean, you've been growing, uh, well, there was four, three, six, you've been growing faster than that.
I guess my question is, is, on your graph, so the far, and I can't see.
Two thousand third seven.
On the left side, is it seventeen? Is that current?
Four, two thousand fourteen, this is where you are right now.
Okay, so it flattens out, so, we had forty-three new homes, each of, sixteen and fifteen, we had forty-three brand-new homes that came into town. So, the homes that were built in sixteen, those that had to come in, you taxed in eighteen, they'll get in eighteen, so there's a two-year lag.
Yeah.
So, we should be realizing, those first two bumps, once we get seventeen.
Seventeen, the seventeen is where you are, you are here, this is where you are, right there. After that, it's just projection.
Okay. We know in the next two years, we're gonna have, over eighteen and nineteen, we're gonna have eighty-six new homes.
Right.
To hit our...
And depending on the value, I'm not sure what that'll be in terms of percentage.
Sure.
But the, the, the main reason I think your tax base is sort of below average, has more to do with commercial.
Right, like a commercial. And I think that goes to what, kind of where our goals was beginning here with our comp plan, this trying to retail recruitment, business recruitment in general is, it's the same issue we had when I was on the school board. The reason everything hits us all when we do a referendum at the school, is that it all goes on to individuals and farms. We don't have a commercial base, like a McNeel's or a big businesses to spread that tax base over, so...
Yeah, and, and arguably, you know, you say, new homes, new homes, new homes, that's great, 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 except for they're consumers. You know, businesses, it, it, this doesn't work out this way, but, you know, but I always say, if businesses put in two dollars but consume one, homeowners put in one and they consume two. Because long-term, you gotta replace their roads, and things like that, so, yeah, businesses where it's at, you can get it.
Yeah, because that, you do the math, if you look at the property tax statements for seventeen, it's about point eight-six percent of your taxable value, is what a residence gets charged and casted. So forty-three homes at a two hundred thousand dollar value, because the new homes are being built, aren't, you know, some are split, some are bigger, you know, you're talking...
How many new homes?
Seventeen hundred and twenty dollars a year for city taxes, or, you know, forty, sixty grand a year or more each year, so it's not like, hey, we built forty-three homes, we got a half million dollars more coming in taxes, it's really sixty or seventy thousand, depending on the...
See, that, those eighty homes represent less than half a percent of your tax base. So, while it sounds like a lot.
It's not that much more than that.
Yeah. A lot of your tax base increase, increase unfortunately, and I do have this built in the model, has to do with the assessor coming in and just raising value on existing folks. But I have that figured into my impacts, I have, um, the assessor coming in and raising the value on homes at least one percent a year.
He's been doing at least that, not more.
Yeah. Well, Doug, that is just too nice to live here, I guess.
So the East Main project, East Main Storm, that's gonna be done this fall yet? And that's in your model?
We have that as a cashed-out project, not debt, um, Nancy, you might want to remind them, but you had transferred some money to the storm fund.
Yes, the intention was to do it this year, I know it turned into a couple things, but as far as I know, we were soaking attraction.
Design easement things that I'm working through, we also have the MinDOT discussion, we parlayed the discussion, and I think you mentioned it, of parlaying that into our fifty-seven discussion, when Therese and I met with MinDOT to try to secure the funds through U fifty-seven. So I've been kind of waiting to see how that washes out first, um, and then I'm also considering a second alignment, potentially, uh, reduce that project cost potentially by going straight east and following the railroad to the creek. Uh, so, some things are in motion on my end, uh, but the, again, the plan was two thousand seventeen construction, which may be a fall, winter, maybe next spring project.
And, and the good news is, since it's a cash project, other than potentially increasing costs due to inflation, other than that, there's no impact, because you've got the cash waiting for it.
Good idea.
And last week was reinforced.
Power lines in the way now.
And last week reinforced why we need to do that.
Yeah, exactly. So, and that actually helped our discussion with MinDOT, we said, hey, we gotta, we got flooding local businesses here, you're closing down your highway, putting the traffic under our city streets. What more do you want to do a cooperative agreement, where the city comes in, does their project, MinDOT is their project, it's a, uh, it's a strong, strong sell, but we gotta work some numbers with MinDOT.
One of the nice things about this huge project that you've undertaken this year, is that as it goes offline, while it was a big pill to swallow, is that, when it goes offline, it creates the ability to do another huge project when it does go, when it is paid for.
What about, just thinking, and this is mainly capital, or, uh, infrastructure improvements, what about larger capital purchases? I know, last year, the townships were in the fire department saving for a tanker, or a home, whatever they're saving for, the townships are putting money aside for that. I'm assuming we're gonna pay for a percentage of that, is that a finance project, or is that something?
We are, I think, I think we're actually budgeting, of course, with that for the next couple of years, to our operating side.
So it won't add to this, okay.
Yep. Now, now, what's not in there, I mean, there's the talk of a new, called a safety building or something, I mean, that's not in there, so then, it's one of those things you add.
Sure.
So just to remind, or reinforce what Mike's saying, is, we do have debt coming off in two thousand twenty-one, that's not all, just the, the sewer plan. And then in two thousand twenty-four, so, so those are some type of opportunities to seize on adding those new projects to keep everything kind of at a steady state. And then Mike talked about the two homes a year, I, I think, being conservative, it's good because we certainly, something had been done before I came here, and the projections were for these forty homes a year for like fifteen years in a row, well, that didn't happen either. So, to be conservative, I think it's really, really prudent.
A, a different, I don't know, if I told you this story, cut me off, but, or, a different engineering firm, not Brandon's, Brandon's got a good one. Uh, a different engineering firm was gonna sewer and water the entire city, or no ball at once, and the assessments that they were telling everybody would have sounded fairly reasonable. My first job there was to analyze their numbers, and I, their numbers were absolutely accurate, problem was, they planned on a hundred new homes a year for twenty years.
Wow.
And when I raised that, in, in terms of, the, the big public meeting must've been a hundred fifty people in the room, standing room only. When I raised that issue, and then I told them, let's adjust that down, and this was at the height of the housing boom, and I adjusted it down to twenty-five, it more than doubled everybody's assessment, so then they started to take a phased approach, hired a different engineer, and I caught hell in the parking lot. But a hundred new homes, they said Pine Island did it, yeah, Pine Island did it one year. Can you imagine if they had pulled the trigger on that? It's almost criminal, so, that's why I'm trying to...
I'd rather be pleasantly surprised when we have forty more a year than...
Yes, exactly.
Disappointed that we only have thirty.
Yeah, that's still something out there.
So, this tool is available to us at any time, if we want to say, hey, okay, we like what you have here, we can print that out, or look at it, or have it, whatever.
Have it, drive it away.
As we're going through some planning or something in the future, something comes up that we find out we have to do, or need to do, we can call and say, hey, plug that in, let us know what the number looks like.
Nancy might say, uh, Mike, I don't need you to come over, I need you to change that one project from four million to three million.
Or add a project, you call it this.
I'll just do it, because what I do is I PDF this stuff, I said, here it is. Um, or it might be, you know what, we've got a lot of things we need to discuss, let's update, and that usually wouldn't happen more than once a year. Sometimes it does, but, you know, usually I wait till every audit is complete before I wanna come back, just because I wanna have it accurate. But yeah, we keep, this is, this is like a, a living, breathing, and for the communities that have done it, it makes our jobs easier.
Well, it makes our jobs easier, I love this stuff.
Yeah, our jobs easier.
Because they can understand it, see the difference.
While you're making a decision, we can easily see how it affects us this year, but you really need to see the impact of that over the ten or fifteen, twenty years of your financing it, or how that affects other projects in the future. It may look good today, but then in two thousand twenty-five, oh, why, you know, like, we hear every, like, why did they do that, you know, well, they are gone.
At least projections, they'll be wrong, but I think they're at least reasonable, because we can't see the future. Um, but what's nice is because I, this is just spreadsheet, to say, if something crazy happens, like they cut your L T A by fifty percent, come back, put it on the wall, and then we have to start cutting.
Appreciate the information too.
Right, we could really be looking at L T A excess.
So how does everyone feel with the way it's, you, you wanna see some...
Oh, I just like the way it lays out, and we see when our debt's coming off, it helps see it, you know?
Yep.
We, we always say we got it coming off, but it's nice when you can see it upfront, when it, we show it coming off...
Yep.
In two thousand twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, where, you know, makes it easier for planning.
Well, it makes it easier for planning for a growing city. This conversation should be totally different if we were losing ten families a year, and not building or renting that back, and we have life of two hundred homes sitting empty, delinquent taxes, and operations get more expensive when that happens versus what people would think, there's less people here, but it still costs more.
I did this for the little town of Zomber Falls, and they wanted to add this project, this project, this project, and when I came, I said, you can't do any of that. And they said, what? I said, if you don't, not only not do that stuff, but don't raise everything that you're charging, you'll run out of money in three years. So, they backed off all those projects and adjusted things, and now they're going, okay. But it's really expensive to live in Zomber Falls, and then they have the flood, kicked in the ass twice.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of damage down there.
And they're good people too, I enjoy that counsel.
Any other questions for Mike? For staff? Nancy, thanks for, for putting your...
They work hard on that, and I know you love those numbers, we talked about numbers before, and guys just light up and talk about numbers.
Okay, once you have this presentation again next week, I'll try, or, I'll try to, I don't think I could.
Well, good, so what I'll do is, for this first one, what you'll do is get a formal report, you know, typed out, kind of major items that we've come up with, plus the PDF of all the exhibits. And then in the future, when we do updates, we'll just get a PDF of the graphs and the input page, and then I'll do like a summary email, saying, here's what we came up with for those future ones.
Perfect, very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Enter team, nobody prefers German. Second? If you'd like, say hi.
Hi.
We need a jury.
We only needed three.
Yeah, we don't need a...
It is?
We adjourn without you.
When did we start?
Hi.
On the holiday one.